Mr. Malbro.
Here.
Mr. Joy Dago.
Here.
Mr. Eric Duchesne.
Here.
Mr. Neil Wembley. Obvious. Mr. Earl Cobal.
Here.
Police Chief, Mr. Alfred Benble.
Here.
Town Attorney, Mr. Brad Andrews. Obvious. And Town Clerk, Mr. Audrey Shortwood. Recognition of guests. Yes. Alright. Consider approval of Rev. 1's agenda. Anything needed to be. Okay. Next thing on the agenda. Meeting and approval of the previous minutes from April 3rd, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I can show them.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second on the...
I'll second the motion.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay. Under the action. Discussion items, old business. Magistrate South.
Mayor, as you mentioned earlier, the other party to this decision item is not here this evening. So I move that we table this matter until the next meeting. I expect that he will be here at that time.
Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Okay. Any more discussion, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Will be tabled until next week, on the next court, I'm sure. Okay, under action, discussion items, new business. Mr. Mater?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm Mr. Counselor. You want to action on it? I have another five. What covers, of course, you have listed on the agenda, I'd like to build on some of it. We are on a treaty contract with the White Collar project, this would be that. The first thing I'd like to make an action on is pressure on the President of the County. Do I have a second, please? And the outdue under partnership estimate was minus thirty thousand, six, seventy-eight, sixty-nine. It's due to check. In that estimate, we are now beholden to containing forty-one thousand, eight, sixty-nine, forty-five, which is how many units there is. And we're back to issue of July, and forty-five days of time.
Thirty thousand, if you had, I bet you a decent amount of the contract, and then all the work that you, your work ethic of belief, all the hundred percent.
The project is complete, we get a final inspection. Thirty thousand, six, seventy-eight, sixty-nine is what we pulled in the contract. Without being continued. So that will change to about forty thousand, forty-one thousand, sixty-nine. You have a question?
Do I have a motion? Hey, Mayor Engineer, thirty thousand, six, seventy-eight. I'm sorry. Discussion from... Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion or question?
Would that be, would that be concluded in this man's report? Yes?
I just four items.
Okay, good deal, no problem. Have any questions?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
The second item, I have, first, same contract, this would be what you're trying to do is the magistrate change order. Takes the original estimated quantities and corrects them to actual quantities of the construction. In this particular case, it's G-Or number three. What it is, is an addition of five thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars, thirty-seven, six, added to the contract, and additional contract time of sixty-eight days. We know we're adding five thousand, one ninety-nine, thirty-seven, we're still to get the original grant amount, which covered construction costs. Grant amount is four hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. That amount, four hundred and eighteen, six ninety-four, fifty-two is the adjusted price, it's about fifty-two dollars below the grant. So that's good news, we're not returning much money to the people. If you're in action, approving G-Or number three, it would be the grand additional contract time of sixty-eight days, and additional cost of five thousand, one ninety-nine, thirty-seven, for adjusted price of four hundred and eighteen thousand, six seventy-nine dollars.
Yeah, well, if you thought...
Now, we definitely will change over to three. Yes, sir. Questions?
Hey, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments, discussion?
I have a question, is that, this is resolution... Okay. No further questions?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
And that's the same project, we're down here in order to terminate the contract. So we're going through this resolution of termination, which... Carries within a notice of termination, and then a report and a final inspection. Does anybody have a copy of it?
I have a copy of it, but I have a question. It says, whereas final inspection with minor work items are identified as contentious portion, this is attached report. I don't, what is on the contentious? Because we need that.
There is one item. Apologize, that's it. His dresser, recent vein line, point of care, is a little bit heavy, and loose pack. We retain the final quantities, the value of the present, which have been released, retained as well.
Okay, so, last, another question, I'm just, I'm sure, where does the G-Street project come into it, in this?
G-Street project is, so, manhole near Evie, on G-Street, and it's a huge problem that the business is receiving.
So does it eliminate that project being done with this resolution?
My question.
To repair that?
Repair of...
The sidewalk, yeah. So where, I'm confused about that part, that's what I was, that's what I wanted to know.
Sidewalk wasn't...
Right, but I thought we were told that's why it wasn't repaired, because there was still concerns and issues with the sewer. Am I wrong with that, or am I sorry? No, I think, you see, that's...
And me, and my fellow councilwoman, is, is the same case. Is it a separate, oh, so, we're gonna address that issue?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to see, to know, how does that project play a part in the resolution of termination?
This is finishing our sewer rehab grant that we received.
It comes to being involved, is that there was a sewer manhole near that sidewalk.
There, there was, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but you're saying there was a sewer manhole near the sidewalk, that we will be discussing in a few minutes?
I'm not sure what you mean discussing, is the sidewalk on G-Street, near Evie, near the Cooley?
Okay.
There was a manhole near that Cooley, that was part of the repair...
So I said that there's a problem in fixing.
And did, did that sewage issue, or the man cover, did it somehow affect the ability for you all, or the ability for that sidewalk to be repaired? Not to your knowledge?
If, if the sidewalk had to be removed and replaced, under this project, it would.
Okay.
The technology did not have to be removed and replaced.
Right.
As an effect.
Okay. If it's okay with councilwoman, go ahead and complete your report, because I think there may be some breakdown, some miscommunication, based on what we were, the council was informed at the last meeting. Yeah, we're missing some information, hopefully you can clarify that for us. But go ahead and complete your report, sir.
Resolution of termination.
Yes, sir.
I do so, look.
Any more questions, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay.
That's the only action I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mater.
The rule, the lowest determination is, is a, is a, is a compromise, is a compromise.
Okay.
Are we...
Move on to...
Mayor, I'm sorry, unless I'm out of order. Is Mr. Mater done with his report? You are?
Does she have more questions? I have no more.
I have, yeah, I think they have a couple of questions, we need to ask Mr. Mater.
I think the question there actually...
No, well... Mr. Todd. I have the floor. Mayor.
I have the floor.
Okay.
Jones, you are aware of the letter Jones has seen in relation to...
Yes, sir.
That's the lid, I think he will, he will want to go with that.
I don't have the letter in front of me, but I'm assuming, assuming that discussion is about the safe routes, proper places, grant application, there for you, for you, for price, two thousand, four hundred.
Mr. Mater, in all honesty, I, I, I know I'm not the only one who really, is not really clear on what was what. And before I begin, before I continue, I was the one who received permission from the mayor to ask you a question. So technically, I had the floor. Now, back to what I was going to ask you, sir. Last month's meeting, we had a very concerned citizen in the meeting, who was concerned about his sidewalk, about his sidewalk near his home, has not been repaired. He had to bring to our attention that the money had been allocated last year, in 2016, for that sidewalk repair. His question to the council was, why wasn't my sidewalk repaired, if the money had been allocated? I'm afraid we were not given any substantial answers. And that is, at that meeting, we specified that we would like to be able to question you, and you possibly provide us some clarification. Todd, you stated, and I quote, "Mr. Mater will be at the meeting, and he will be able to clarify the situation for us." That is why I'm asking you, sir, to please clarify the information, because, but not for me, not for me, but for the constituent.
First of all, where is the sidewalk? I have no idea where the sidewalk is.
Answer, answer. Give you the word.
G-Street, by the pool, in that...
That, that is, that is the one.
We were told it had something to do with sewage issues.
And it could not be repaired.
And to give a recap, and in fairness, because Jones is not, I'm trying to, Jones, or Mr. Mater, not aware of the money that you speak about is allocated. Allocation, first, I'd rather the building see, for sewer rehab, so let's not get there completely, okay? The money was allocated by the time for two projects, which was Main Street and G-Street, which was forty-two thousand dollars. So, and over forty-two thousand, twelve thousand was spent on the last, I mean, now on Main Street, which left roughly thirty thousand. Okay, so what happened, if you follow the timeline, what happened after that, was a date, or like, it was eight, maybe I've got the timeline. Starting the smoke test. Smoke test revealed the manhole that you speak about. And also the two sewer mains, okay, that caused the corruption of the sidewalk and the bridge. Sidewalk crosses both sewer. And we also have, I guess you call it the structure, that couldn't be repaired, because the sewer man could pass it off. Sewer man could not be repaired. Well, after that time, to be more defined, it did can be checked, which happened by November, is a question. So that was about August, we see May, May to June. August, we have the floods. It was in September or October, was when we had the project. Monies were not reallocated for this project. Questions?
Yeah, I have several questions.
Well, that's, the money that was appropriated...
You asked me that question. Or, let me ask my questions. I'm still, no more clear, and I think, Mr. Mater, from the look in your face, you're kind of dumbfounded as well. Yeah, you're not, yeah, yeah. Sir, if I, if I may, if I may, sir, would you, would you approach the podium, so that...
Well, I'd like to finish my timeline.
You can finish your timeline, but I think right now, we need to have this gentleman up here, so he can better help us all understand what his understanding of the project was going to be, because it affects him. So what was your understanding?
They had two bids, I remember, I was looking. One was for this project, one was for this project. He had thirty-seven thousand fixed there.
Thirty.
Understanding it was fixed, and you told us last minute, it wasn't fixed. They had a problem. Mr. Mater just said, it's complete. He just said it. All I wanted was, why it's not be fixed.
And once again, to finish my statement, in favor of historical community of persons, the smoke testing revealed the sewer manhole was the problem. Also, the two sewer mains, that one that runs along the river, the other one that runs along G-Street. The money, to make it finished, the money, okay, for the project, to define, we had it be can be fixed, in May. It was fine exactly where it was at. Then we had the flood. We also had the budget, we netted thirty thousand, that was allocated to fix, where you were at, was not reappropriated.
Because the budget here had... Okay, well, here's the...
Sorry, Todd, I mean, would you have a certain amount of money to do something on that, regardless as to what you were doing prior to, you know?
Well, it's just like, it's just like the, just like the building, or the, the street point, you can't spend the money again, and that should be appropriated again.
Well, but I think, what we learned from last month's meeting, is that this gentleman, basically, was saying to the council, and that is one of the reasons why I'm taking it up at this time, he said to the council, "You all appropriated funds to help repair the sidewalk near his home." Nothing has happened, and that was appropriate last year. So, if the scenario, hold on, sir, hold, I have, if the scenario is such that the money was used for something else, was not actually allocated for that, or whatever the case may have been, someone should have come back to the council, and say, "Council, this gentleman is still in need of repairs to his sidewalk." Because as a council, we voted on that, and part of our vote was an assurance to this gentleman, that the sidewalk would be repaired. So we, here we are, in the middle, almost in the half of the second year, six months later, he's telling us, "Shame on you, council, because you guys didn't even realize that what you all assured him, what we assured him, has not happened." That is why I'm concerned, because at, right this point, my question is, are we going to have his sidewalk repaired? If so, do we need to allocate the funds? Or if it cannot be repaired, that is where Mr. Mater, sir, and again, you were kind of caught off guard, but we were told that you would be able to provide some clarification to this. Sure, absolutely.
It's referred to, tied to sidewalk, to the sidewalk bridge. Had, had nothing to do with the manhole, nothing to do with sewer, was to build a bridge across the Cooley, and is that sidewalk bridge...
That bridge across the Cooley, sir, would that happen to be what we're referring to? Okay, now, this bridge across the Cooley, are you telling us that, that this bridge across the Cooley was covered in the grant? It was not. But you, okay, good deal, but you are saying that it needs to be repaired, and it can be repaired? It's not, or would we...
Not for his project, he said according for the sewer, the sewer thing and the manhole deal, that is all done, that was not, that was not.
And I'm not disagreeing, we're not disagreeing with any of that.
He said it was, it could be done, remember that, remember you went on your own time?
Right.
Didn't charge you time anything, it was my father.
It could be done. Mr. Mater, is that still your position, that that bridge can still be done?
Anything can be done.
Anything can be done.
Or whatever it costs. I think what happened at the time, is that Todd went to a company that prefabricates aluminum, or...
Aluminum bridge.
Aluminum bridge, and I think he got a price, and he got a price from contractor to install it. I can't tell you what happened, but again, that would definitely do, that sewer grant, or sewer...
Absolutely.
We told that there was sewer issues that was, had the hope to repairing the bridge.
And, and actually, and actually, and actually, the ball was tossed over to you, sir, which is the reason why we're questioning you today.
But that's what he stated at that meeting before, that I was here, Mr. Mater said that he couldn't do nothing there, because the flood had, had given something to where we wouldn't fix the bridge, that it didn't make sense to fix the bridge, until he had that thing done, that's what I had said, and why, why is it not done?
And the point that I'm trying to get at is...
Because that's what he brought up at the meeting.
And that was, and that was our understanding.
So we were waiting for this.
So what are we wait, so, so what are we waiting on now?
So what we know now is this, and not really waiting, is to allocate those things directly, which is why I have this here, here from Jones, who works for Mr. Mater. I had him draw these papers up, after we, after you had your, your last meeting.
Okay, so...
After the statements, and all of everything.
So you went out and did, got an estimate?
No, not an estimate. What happened was, in my meetings that I had, in my meetings I had with Mr. Jones to support, this has been ongoing. What we discovered is this, the lawn, the main sewer lawn, is a trough, that runs from Evie Street, makes a valley to return, to that plant, that was repaid, to manhole going down, was the last issue. That main lawn, trough lawn, has been repaired, new response. And the way that it was repaired, feeling, recommend, that this lawn would be observed, monitored, because it's continuously happening. So, also, along G-Street, right next to where this crossing is that, okay, that lawn is not repaired. So, the possibility of being required to monitor this lawn, two lines actually, it would not be the best idea to put the fund towards any type of possible, this has been very possible to have been. So do you all want to expand, and this is what the thousands of the services, if you wanted to expand, for some thousand dollars, to this particular area, which we have records going back, which I explained last, or last, or this year, going back to nineteen, nineteen yards, of this continuous happening with the, with it. It is not a recommendation of you. On their business, and as have so basically, I know Mr. Jones to support, or Mr. St. Jones, which Mr. Mater, are very, he has recommended that funds be spent somewhere, and not, and this area, this area would be monitored for future developments, because it's going to happen.
Can I see that, bud?
Chris, yeah, but you, you've been having problems with that, that, uh, hollow, what it is, but, when, when, like, they put, they put some on top of it, you...
No, that was, no, that was in the yard. That was shit.
I would have been getting that yard sort of game, or game. But it's been fixed, never stolen.
I mean, it don't make sense, this kind of, I mean, it didn't have to be fixed.
I have, I have records going back to nineteen-niners, that it has been law, it was, red lines have been actually, to be reality, to be removed, and put somewhere. It has.
Is there, have there been made on how many kids passed like that?
That, that is, that's right.
And that has, the field study has been done.
But what has the field study determined?
We've done four different studies.
Yes, I did, I went out myself, I did it. And I just have the, uh...
Did I see the...
Dates.
Did I see the, you, you about, you about see you did a field study?
I just went to watch to see. How many kids crossed?
The bridge is not there, are they crossing?
No, no.
Yeah, that's a field study, but, good observation.
Observation. How many kids came down the street?
And how many kids did you count, man?
None.
Sir, there are no kids, there are no kids, there are no kids that cross there, sir? No, 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 sir, sir, no, 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 this is, this is, no, 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 you're, we, we serve you, please, stand up, we, we do not want you to leave until you have been, your, your issue has been satisfied. Are there any kids, are there any kids that cross over there?
There's hundreds of, I mean, come on, the pork's right there.
So it's safe to assume that maybe when this field study was... So it's safe to assume that maybe when this field study was?
Well, I have a recommendation.
First thing, Todd, look, the mayor should be talking to my chief.
I was asking questions, so I'm sorry.
No, the mayor, I got the question, you just been to you, so you can.
No, no, let me do this, uh, I was asking about the policy, I was asking, I was asking about the policy.
You just started talking.
No, I was asking about the policy.
You started talking.
So, 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 here, so, so, at, at this point, we were kind of at a crossroad, because I, I do feel that, that it is a project that has continued to need repair. Of course, I don't, I don't think we need to necessarily dump money into it. However, and of most concerns to me right now, is the fact that I know there are kids that cross over there. I have actually gone out and I've seen it. It's not only an eyesore, but it's a, it's a tremendous liability to the town right now. So if we're not going to build a bridge, or whatever, I think we need to quickly go ahead and, and, and fix it in a manner where someone doesn't get hurt. Because then, if we're talking about thousands of dollars now to repair it, if someone gets hurt and we're sued, then the town has to probably pay two or three times more than, because it's been on record for several times now that this is a project that needed to be repaired. So it's clearly on public record.
It's been working a year and a half. And the people, the old people in the park, that they drive their school, they used to pass. You know, how much sense would tell you, "I went there ten times, I can't pass, so they're gonna take another block."
Right.
Makes not sense. Both their school there.
Well, I, I, I understand your concern, I do.
Okay, I made three observations. Three probably, Mr. Mader, what the mayor. Right after school. Before school was out. The first observation, I was parked at the Shell station, old Shell station. The next two observations, I was parked next to the park, where I could see kids pass and see if they were gonna turn on Russo. There were no kids, zero kids, walked all the way to the bridge. There was one kid, and I saw her, a girl, three times, that came down Tan Street. That's the only people I saw, and I was there after school, you're correct. I did not go after baseball practice, anything, I went after school, when school was out. Watched the buses pass, watched the kids walk.
Yes, they've been broken for a year and a half.
Okay, well, I'm just going by my observations, I'm not saying.
Well, I knew, I, I sit from my booth every day.
Do they pass?
Yeah.
After school?
But they, but they're not, they only, they played in it. They played in it, kids almost got hit two, three times, just this past week.
Okay, but I'm, I'm asking after school.
Then, then, the opposite, the, the, whatever you said.
Okay.
It, it makes no sense, because it's been broken a year and a half, this is a year and a half. They, they smart enough to take another block. If you can't, if you don't know, since the, the park, the schools are there, there, there's a lot of traffic, we have a problem. I mean.
That's because the, the sidewalk goes across the tiles and stops, maybe we need to tear up the sidewalks unless these idiots don't keep on going on the sidewalk.
And that's a recommendation.
That's the recommendation.
I'm doing that one, that's the solution.
And that's the recommendation that Mr. Mader has, is.
Basically, that's what I'm saying, if you're not gonna provide a safe way for people to get across the pool, which is away from the road, which is narrow, little garden, that's not gonna happen, and try to prevent anybody from taking that route in the walk, going to add it to school, or if, going down that street. If we're not gonna replace the bridge, this doesn't say don't place the bridge. It says the sidewalk, that moves the bridge, if it is subject to possible deterioration, if that manhole continues to get this down. Correct, it's an old manhole. This does not say, don't, don't build it.
So wait, just having a manhole that deteriorates the sidewalk affect the bridge?
Or the, or how the sidewalk?
If you properly, properly build the sidewalk bridge, it will not be affected by the manhole, but the approach sidewalk.
Monitor.
We're not just saying don't build that, we're just saying you need to keep an eye. So, build a bridge, build a sidewalk, you should keep an eye on what's happening.
And that's my point, that's my point, it doesn't say don't build a bridge. It says monitor, monitor with the bridge, monitor without a bridge. Monitor, keep your eye on it, check it out, look at it, make sure there's nothing that's stopping.
I agree with you, that's what I'm saying.
You, you, you agree with what Councilwoman just said? Thank you.
This does not say don't build a bridge.
Right.
It says if you build anything, monitor, because you do have that situation that could cause you to experience.
And, and sir, since you've been living there, how many times has that particular sidewalk needed repair? Since you've been living there?
About thirty-five years.
Once in thirty-five years? Pretty good odds.
A hundred years old.
Pretty good odds, once in thirty-five years.
Causes a lot of problems. And it causes a lot of problems, I'll tell you. And you repaired it once?
No, they didn't repair the sidewalk, they repaired.
Bridge.
Can I ask a question? Does anybody know the distance that this bridge is, about how far?
Should be on that bridge somewhere.
Are you asking the span?
The span, yes, sir. I have some old eight-by-ten crease old beams left over from the old vehicle. That would help, I can, uh, I'd like to tell them that, you know, do you have anything on that bridge? Is that old crease, or this crease all the way through?
For the span is?
Yes.
It needs a net, I mean.
Yeah, well, I'm just, you know, I want to see what was.
You need also, you need, you need, you need, you need, it's also a flood, face front of it. And you don't want columns pushing in and down, because it catches under evil things.
It's a tear, yes, yes. Once again, also, understanding area, to be above the basement elevation, you have to raise the bridge to a height, that you will be going beyond. And that is another problem, where we, when we talk about the bridge, the bridge, the bridge, for the money that was formerly out, it can be flooded there. So the, the side will have to increase beyond the border.
Can I agree or disagree with that? I know that, that there's no, there's no reason to think that you have to build a bridge higher than the border, because the water's problem is the construction. Build your bridge, part of its flood is.
What I'm saying is, with, with, the thing with the bridge, part of it not being the best idea, it won't be a good thing. It would probably have to be reinforced, probably built itself into the actual, you know. Again, once again, if you have part of today, you're gonna have to tear up that, and also the road, just to be access to this. Because we would not have a bridge. So the thing is this, going back to the old situation is this, if we're gonna have to monitor, not just the manhole, to monitor the sewer main that goes along this drainage problem, and monitor the other line. Do we want to expend forty-seven thousand dollars, whatever, to repair it? Or would better for the town? Expended money in other areas where we need projects actually done, and just basically turn the traffic over to Orange Street, towards Orange. And it's not that big of a, I mean, for the foot traffic, the monophot traffic that we have in that area, as the mayor said, we can walk. Just turn the traffic over to Russo, and go to Orange, which is, which is show block. So, I mean, it's just something you ought to think about. If we're gonna expend forty thousand dollars, would it be better to look off the interest of the town, and just go one street over?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't know, Todd, I didn't interrupt, I don't, I don't know, I, well, well, yeah, I don't know, but I'd like to hear what the mayor's position is, not the clerk. You, you're sharing a lot of, and I don't mean to minimize your role, but I know it's an important role, but I'm saying, but.
I'm gonna speak as the clerk.
You are, or you're not?
I'm not speaking as the clerk.
And what's your, what's, as a what?
I'm speaking a little capacity.
What is that capacity?
Well, as Mr. Mader said, I'm speaking as the clerk, I mean, the industry, which I am.
Okay, but even when you were saying that, Mr. Mader, it does not seem like you're one hundred percent on board with this, this suggestion. Are you, or are you not?
Suggestion.
That, that Mr. Richard is making.
When you construct something new, Tim, you can agree with, or not disagree with, usually when you construct something new, you want it, but it have to be a... When you replace, if it's already there, that, that was, that was a kind of, kind of structure. So when you're replacing something, that's one thing. When you're gonna build something new, everyone else is required to build it over here.
I'm gonna disagree with you, it appears to me that it did need to be built. There's no regulations saying you have to build a sidewalk bridge, a road based on that. That's a hundred years from the elevation. You had plenty of flooding in here, it didn't reach a hundred years from the elevation. It wasn't affected by the bridge that was there. Dominant feature there is the road, the column that goes under the road that strips drains. Home, as you build a sidewalk out of, uh, top of that box column, the bridge is not gonna have any effect on the drains. And if you do that.
That was definitely my question, thank you.
I don't think you increase the span if you build the bridge basically back about where it was, which was right after the operation.
But once again, is, do you want to spend that money? And the other problem is this, working with the elements that we have there, with the deteriorated lawns that we have, that was not prepared at a hundred percent.
What, what Todd and the mayor asked us to do is look at, what if we don't build the bridge? What if we don't replace it? What can you do? And that's when we looked at the next street to the west.
It's just an option.
And what we did say was, you, you need to terminate this sidewalk far in advance of the Cooley, because there's nothing preventing someone from taking a walk at night and walking under the Cooley. So move that sidewalk back thirty, forty, fifty feet, so that people know that's the end of the sidewalk, they don't keep walking into the Cooley. Put up signage, we say that here. So that tells everybody sidewalk ends, and maybe warns them about crossing or walking on the street, which is very narrow. So that, we, we saw that, and I agree with Todd, that why not try that, that route? Why go spend forty thousand dollars on a bridge if other routes will suffice?
And would that, would that other option eliminate the, the liability, the hazard that it now presents?
Yeah, I think if you end the bridge far enough before the Cooley, and you properly sign, and let people know that that's the end of the sidewalk, and go further could be dangerous, and you, you showed up your liability quality.
And would this second option eliminate this sidewalk as a, as a community eyesore? Because it's a terrible eyesore, now it looks horrible.
The, the old bridge?
Yeah, where, with, the way it looks now. Will it eliminate, will it be done in a way that is more presentable?
That old bridge is still there?
It's been removed. And the only thing that needs to be done now is also just remove the sidewalk, replace that dirt. The sidewalk is that now.
You put a bridge there, and then you have, you have trouble, you have to get it back up.
That bridge, that bridge is a hundred years old. So I don't think it's a bad investment if you get a hundred years out of it. Todd don't wanna do it, so Todd don't wanna do it.
So you're just, you're selling to the council?
Yeah.
We've allocated money to do it, and it's done, so I don't see why we're moving up to the council.
So, yeah.
The question is, if you build a bridge and you have trouble.
It's not gonna take forty dollars to build a bridge.
Yeah, but if you build the bridge and you have trouble with that water line down there, do we have to pull to the sewer line? Do we have to pull the bridge to be able to get to the sewer line? You know, if you're wasting money, you're also a problem.
Mr. Mader, that's a good, that's a good question. Mr. Mader, what are, what are, what are your thoughts?
I, I don't think that sewer line is gonna be a detriment to the bridge. I think if you build a bridge properly, you don't have to worry about the bridge as it pertains to the sewer.
So, so, Mr. Mader, as an, as the engineer, you're saying that if a build, a bridge was built over Mr. Mesh's, in Mr. Mesh's area, the sewer would not affect, the bridge itself would not affect the sewer if there was something we had to do with the sewer in the future? Those are two separate entities.
And that's something we've said from the start here, is the sidewalk and the bridge is a totally separate issue from the bridge.
Got it.
You can build a bridge, if you think it's a worthwhile expenditure of public funds, if it serves enough people, build a bridge.
This, Getre Street going to the park, going to school, that's the street that's more, that's the easiest for the kids to travel on, it's the closest one to the park. If this street will take in this area, and that's where you need to go, why redirect the kids to come two or three streets down to get on another street that crosses to get down to the park, along with all the traffic? To me, get the kids on the sidewalk closest to where they have to go, needed to be home from school, to school, or to the park.
Well, the only thing that we have brought up was that, because Mr. Mader had brought last year, was the safer out the public schools, was one street over, which is wrong street.
Yeah, but that, that's irrelevant now, because that, that, that grant, that's, uh, what is it? That's, that's irrelevant, we're not even gonna get that. So that, that's not even, that shouldn't even be part of this discussion.
I was just gonna answer your question.
Well, it was relevant then, when we were possibly going to get that grant. Now it's totally irrelevant. It's totally irrelevant.
The location, the location is just one street over, it's not two streets, or three streets, it's one.
Right, but had we gotten that grant, then the grant could possibly fund this sidewalk, or whatever, but that's, that's irrelevant. My next question, my next question is, so we're saying that it could possibly cost about forty-seven thousand dollars?
With my estimate, I think.
Just guessing.
We had an estimate.
From the pre-fair company, and it got priced from a contractor, and he would take it in his prefabricated form, and he would build foundations on both ends and it's old.
And mayor, what was that cost?
What was that, yeah, what was that?
Forty?
Forty?
Well.
Roughly?
Roughly.
Forty thousand?
We have that information, that being this?
How did that old bridge go down? Wasn't it because of a washout from that, uh, sewer line over there? Wasn't that the reason that that old bridge washed? Because that old bridge should have never washed, if we, we talk about a hundred years, like Tim's saying, it should have never washed away, right? Why did it wash away? What's the, what's the verdict on that? How did it happen?
It was because of the sewer, it was because of the manhole and the sewer.
Which has been repaired.
And we back in the same problem.
Right, well, which has been repaired.
Yeah, but it, but they say watch it, it could go bad again, and then we looking at the same problem.
Right, well, well, if, well, Mr. Mader. But, Mr. Mader, you, 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 you did say that, but even if there was an issue with the sewer, right? That would be, that would, that repairs, or whatever, to the sewer would not affect the sidewalk, or the bridge, or whatever.
If you build a bridge with knowledge that you have something unstable nearby, you can build a bridge so it's.
With respect to?
To that instability, yes.
And that's in the forty thousand dollars. Don't wanna see the city spending money in the ten, ten, ten years down the road. We spent a double to fix what we created.
The thing is this, is the span of the bridge and the location of the sewer line, which that wasn't determined. If, when we had spoke about it last year, when Tim and I had went out there, the actual span was, was forty foot to reach, to get that distance. That would have to be determined, actually where the main trunk line passes, to make sure the foot of that bridge would not be over the sewer main. That was the only problem that they had when the construction people were out there, and the guy that was trying to figure out the span, where that foot of that span would fall. To make sure that it would not be in or around within.
And attach a big bridge, so you can move it out the way if you have to.
Well, that's, that's part of it. You don't wanna put the span of that bridge where it would fall, you know, over that main sewer line. Because if something was to happen, that you had to do repairs on that main, okay? You would not want to go and destroy something that you're spending forty thousand dollars.
That's what I'm about.
Right, but, but I, I would be concerned about that as well, but, Mr. Mader, go ahead, sir, I interrupt you.
The old bridge was built across the wing walls of the box. So the wing walls of the box provided the support.
Correct.
Those wing walls are not any kind of support, and the forty-foot span has to go beyond that as support. You gotta get your support from maybe ten or feet, ten, ten or fifteen feet south of the bridge, and ten or fifteen feet north of the bridge, and that's that, that's that forty-foot span. Well, when, when I say build a bridge properly, and with respect to the sewer line, you can move the bridge eastward, move it away from the road. Because you don't need to, to cross it where those wing walls are, the wing walls provide nothing. So we, soon you have right of way, or you can get right of way, you can move that bridge five feet, ten feet, parallel to the road, just move it over and divert the sidewalk to it.
Then you get, then you getting into the Shell station.
Once again, once again, once again, in, in respect to what Mr. Mader's saying, we're limited as to, okay, you're getting into a parking lot, an existing parking lot, and how much air you have, you gotta have enough ground. In other words, to actually, and, and to actually place the, the structure of the forty-foot span bridge that he's talking about, it can't be over the sewer line.
How far east do you have to take that bridge?
Yeah, you, you're estimating a design that's.
Just a question.
Right out, it's a good question, and, and because it's a good question, if, if we need to go out and map what's there, what's in the? out and map what's there, what's in the way? You know, that sewer line, it is, is in a spot, the road's in a spot, the wing walls are. The parking lot across on the, on the north side is, there's a, I think there's bulkhead or something, timber bulkhead on that other side. A lot of things are unknown, and when I throw out the option of moving the bridge, it's just something to think about. I'm not saying it's gotta work.
It's feasible, it may be feasible. So now you could be going from forty thousand, you could jump up to fifty thousand.
There's no way you could just add another, another large covert, right, to the sewer line?
Could, that, that would be a great idea, but that becomes very expensive.
To add a covert?
Yeah, the covert, the large covert that is there now is too small to handle, it oughta be replaced. This thing could blow up in your, right in front of you as a huge project, really you oughta move the covert to stay and replace it. To be part of the system. That's, that's the, but that's.
Can destroy the roads. Can destroy the roads.
Can't get us a grant for that?
If you do that, you might apply for a, a better cycle, better protection against sewer line, better drainage.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, that we do that. Go out there and assess it and let's figure it out. Let's, let's have, see what can be done.
A feasible?
A feasible study?
Right.
Oh, we just come out and do that. Do a study and get a report.
See what, what do we take, what are options we can take? Not just think about it.
Is that an official motion, Councilman?
Yes, it is.
I will second that motion.
Discussion. Who's gonna do that?
Uh, who's gonna do the, the study?
My engineer?
Do we want our engineer? Are we okay with that? Mr. Mayor?
I would like you to, if you do ask me to do the study, I would like you to authorize me to include in the study, I refer to as the no build alternative. Let's put in there an option to not build a bridge and route traffic as one of maybe three or four options.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes.
More than one option.
We want, yeah, for all bases.
Right.
Is there a way to direct the traffic, like the kids to walk across in front of the bridge, onto the other side of the bridge to be a shorter span and out of the way of the, the sewer line?
Look at that.
It might be short on the, even the west side, right?
There's no sidewalks on that.
Yeah, but if you make just a crossover and then go onto the other side, wouldn't that help just in that one area?
Well, we already off, we already off.
No, no, I'm talking right by the bridge. So they can walk to the bridge, take a left, and then walk across. Still have a bridge on that road, just on the west of, of the, of the road.
But that's one of the options, right? You can change it.
That cross the street that Dan should do.
Well, I might run the same.
Well, they gotta cross the main, they gotta cross thirty-five right there, that's just as dangerous and much more than it really, if they don't open their eyes.
They would do it another way, they could put, they could put it down.
At his worst.
Well, in the motion, it's providing some different options.
Absolutely different options.
Whatever you think.
Mr. Mesh, Mr. Mesh, are you, are you clear on what we're, what we're gonna proceed with? We hate, we hate that have to be delayed again, but I think it's in the best interest of the, the community to do that.
Yeah, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
We get a total of two thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. We had one benchmark recall, one was given credit to Tom Sir. We did fifty-one traffic citations and made twenty-three felony drug cases. Any questions?
Any questions? No, ma'am? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Sewer Department backhoe, Claire and Sir Plus property. Okay, as most of you know, the Sewer Department inherited the Water Department sewer, I'm not sorry, backhoe, and it is completely gone. As far as, these are the things, the case five eighty K. The year according to case, let's call case to get, see what year was this backhoe? And the best they could give us was nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety-three, in between those years. So we'll just take an average of nineteen ninety. Okay, so we have a, a backhoe that's basically twenty-six years old. Now, this is the problems. First of all, the start is out. The backside of the knee is changing. There's a, a prying, bearings and bushings are gone, which causes tires to rot, be used up quickly, and basically just wear and tear. And they want to repair this, it's just sitting on the ground right now, and we would like to declare that Sir Plus property. Do you have a motion?
I'm gonna second that and start a discussion. I know there's several people there from the Water Department that know that this backhoe is done, and the Sewer Department has inherited, and they know it's done. So, you know, the repairs over the years, I see where you're going with that. If it's a nineteen eighty-seven until nineteen ninety, we wouldn't do something similar with police corps or anything. Without even looking at it, I'm seconding the motion. I just wanted to go out there, this backhoe is.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, next item is the street sign replacement requests. I think that was a request for no parking on sidewalks, Malbro.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, it was, it actually did not include, but actually included more than just, thank you for noting that, more than just sidewalk, signs for sidewalks indicating where people should be walking. This matter was actually brought to my attention by concerned citizens in our community, and I think it's important to note that this is not about pointing the finger or placing blame, but most importantly, it's another opportunity where we all, as citizens of our community, come together as one community for both the safety, the well-being, and also the improvement of our community. So I'm actually happy that one of our concerned citizens allowed me to present this as an agenda item, and I'm very pleased and proud to introduce that citizen to the, the council as well as the, the individuals present. His name is Scott LaFlore. Mr. LaFlore has been a resident of our community for roughly forty-five years now. He's, he actually held a position on the Church Point Community, in the Church Point Community Development Organization. For those of you that do not know, Church Point Community Development Organization is, is significant to helping build and, and revitalize our community. It does awesome work that, that I personally think goes without mentioning. Also, Mr. LaFlore has helped to plan, promote, and complete the Buggy Town Playground. I hope that you all enjoy the brief presentation that Mr. LaFlore will present to us tonight. What he is going to do is pretty much bring attention and awareness to some of the things that we probably take for granted, and that has to do with some of the signs and things of that nature that need to be repaired. Last point is, this, again, is not pointing fingers, but it falls right in line with what the community is currently doing, with renovating the buildings, tearing down some of the old building. So it goes hand in hand in terms of just making things look better.
Mr. LaFlore, you have the floor, sir.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Scott LaFlore. I'm the current City Councilman, Mr. Gene Malbro. I'd like to request that I make the presentation. My experience in being here tonight, the safety, the drawing of the planning zone, even wasn't called the block here, so I made a bill. Over fourteen years, designing, all of it, I gave him. In doing that, I have worked for a variety of citizens in our community, allowing their restrictions. Have those restrictions imposed places clearly in order to maintain uniform appearance and functionality of any town. Tonight, I'm presenting a very small part of many other improvements that I have been working on, all my own time, all focusing on one thing, that is improving the image of Church Point. And also changing the mindset of people who believe our town is just good enough, good enough as a business. You know, I hear people talk about Church Point, and they say, well, you know, that's just Church Point, or that's just the way Church Point is. I believe as many other people do that, we can do that. First, I'd like to give current City Councilman and our current Mayor, Mr. Russell Steller, to note that I do understand these issues, how can you care to go along with your time prior to your time here. Pictures I'm showing here are just basic city maintenance, maintenance issues that need to be addressed. One of the cities is a city ordinance that has simply been ignored and not enforced. Church Point must invest itself. We are not only obligated to repair or replace, but we must have plans and ways for future improvements. We do have priorities, such as the unsightly building down Main Street, which we can, and also not ignore the smaller issues such as street signage, and that being said, I'd show you the votes here. Since we're talking about the signage, the first thing I'd like to address is to be called flyers we have. They're in our town. Almost every single post we have in town has flyers for businesses, both in-town businesses, but most of them are out-of-town businesses. Some of them do not have wood frames attached to their back, because they wanted it there for long haul. We love our local businesses, but our town is not a billboard for every business in church. And I also had the, I talked to Mr. Malbro about a solution that we do, do away with those signs, and I would volunteer my time to get that done. Second thing is need signs. I mean, we can talk about, you can see it, it's just pretty evident. These are all in our major areas, like schools, church and churches, how parks, all these were taken within fifteen, twenty minutes of being brought around in my truck. Some of the angles even worse, because I couldn't get out, not even get an angle straight ahead. Next thing is using the signs. I don't know any other word I'm saying, but we have signs that's all around our town that has, they're, they're, they're no use to them, but they're in front of people's windows, and it's an eyesore for this town. This one right here, I think it's right there, this is a couple right here. This one here, I mean, seven. Both there, we, we do have signs that are still good, but you can see they're, they're full of mold, they're over the years. They're a simple fix that I, a simple fix, most of them, uh, it's gonna be here. Damage on it, and this is a, this is a liability in my, my, my concern. Someone goes where it stops on like this and kills someone, I mean, let's just say they came through this town not being able to stop them, or not having any reflective ability at nighttime anymore. And this can go on, I don't, I mean, I did, I took these pictures just around main area of Church Point, not even going down the side streets. This one here, I'm not sure, it's been probably a year and a half or a year, so it's been up. It's right there, it goes through all wash, for what reasons, it's not been fixed, I'm not sure. Another one here. Not to get into sidewalk thing again, but this one's a home pharmacy bank, where someone's driving at night, or, you know, out there, rode one night, and I'm in a wheelchair, I fall, it's been ahead of, I might have a brand new swim, this is one of Church Point's banks there, I think it's a liability issue. Probably been like that ten years. And that's what we talked a lot, a lot about, the bridge, I took a picture of that. For, for the signage, I think most of us can be a quick fix, you get two guys to pick up truck, whatever that is. Portable pressure washer, and, and a pad of paint, straighten up the sign, if it needs to be, the mold's up, I mean, quick pad or pressure, pressure washer, and if the sign needs to be replaced, you mark where that sign is, you get everything done at once, you have inventory of where that sign is, and what type of sign needs to be replaced, and then sit it in an alley at once, so you get a sign. That's the end of the papers here. Again, I understand we do have other problems, but doing this and giving it a visual perspective, first thing, just talking about it, it's all a different impact. So I request upon Mr. Malbro and as a taxpaying resident, I hope this helps present the importance of these overdue issues, and I request this administration puts its motion, is dedicated to fix these issues in a timely manner, and I will back to it immediately.
Thank you, Mr. LaFlore. I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, my, the only, my, my last thoughts are, again, how much I appreciate you for just showing his concern for the community we all love and appreciate. This is actually, goes right in line with Mr. Richard, our inspector, what he's been doing, and that is looking at some of these dilapidated buildings and ensuring that those buildings don't fall on someone and then we face liability of a lawsuit or something. Well, those are sort of select projects, and Mr. Richard has been doing a pretty good job at, at that, but what Mr. LaFlore has shown us are the, the, the signals and the signs that we need just to operate safely throughout the day. And if you think about it seriously, what he has shown us affects not only everyday citizens like ourselves, but it also affects our law department, our law enforcement department, because if someone, a, a police officer pulls over someone or failing to yield or failing to stop, then that individual can say, can you see that sign? If you can't see it, how can you issue a ticket for me to see it? So it's just the community coming together hand in hand and preventing or minimizing the risk for, for, for everyone. Mr. LaFlore?
And I forgot one, one comment, the utility signs.
Yes, sir.
Have business flyers throughout town, it is a city ordinance that's not being enforced and it is also illegal instead of, you know, to have anything stapled on there to those posts because of the safety of the line.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you again. That is, that is all that I have to say. Thank you again, Mr. LaFlore, for bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
Good job, Scott.
What's that happen, she walks the city a lot, she'll pull them all down.
Who about you?
But you know, in last year, they do, I know contractors that actually go and they put their signs in the ground, and they don't, they know they're not supposed to, they don't care, and they're like, they wait to try and pull them up, and they're gonna be right back and put them down, so they're constantly pulling them up, pulling them up all the time, and these people, they don't care, so they'll keep putting them back. So you're just gonna have to keep pulling them up.
Absolutely.
The proposal that I, I talked to Gene about is, all, all my own time, I, I mean, their number, their name and numbers on, on the, their, their business signs there, you call them up and you tell them seven dates, come take their own sign down, or you. you find.
It's not allowed in the state court, and they're not allowed at all. Because it's dirty.
If they don't let their sign down, so much of it will collect five million per town.
Thank you, Mr. LaFleur. Good job.
I just don't take down my real thing down.
Don't you really?
It's not on the post.
I have to stand up because I'm not told enough to see Scott. Thank you for the, for this. And we are, in fact, last week, the employees were told, our street employees were told to start straightening the signs, and after we start removing the ones that were, you know, replacing signs and things like that. So we're now starting that, at the present. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Awesome. All right. Thanks again, Scott.
Okay. Let's see. Next thing is legal resolutions about the village rate of seven point zero one. Do I have a motion to adopt this village rate of seven point zero one?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop it. Village, I'll take the same thing, get to the last year. I'll make that go.
One second. Any more questions or discussions? Any questions or discussion?
No.
It's not anything we can change.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, our next item is reports, requests, and introductions of ordinances that are A building code inspection reports and recommendations to council of Mr. Rodney Richard, Town Inspector. Mr. Richard.
Scott, thank you. We have, I guess, a couple things in common. I worked for LCP for about three or four years as their chief building inspector. And within those three or four years, I can vouch for what he said about sidewalks. In what we call the Jefferson Street area, I was probably, as a chief building inspector, there about three or four lawsuits because of people tripping over sidewalks hazards and stuff like that. So they do come after the city on issues like that. And I was more than raised five miles around here because I think I almost called myself a trip point person. Anyhow, what I would like to start addressing, I'm hoping I'm in the same order as y'all are, if I could. One, Twenty-Six Main Street. If you look at your pictures, and I always like, I'm a picture person, so anytime you see a report from me, you're gonna see pictures. This building evidently has been vacant for a while. Is the owner of this building present, Ms. Pauline? We asked that they would be present tonight to try to give the council their opinion on what they would do, would like to do with the building. So since she's not here tonight, I'm gonna go through my report. This particular building, if you're not familiar with it, it is flat on the public right of way. There's stuff that's hanging over the public right of way that's in very bad condition that's about to fall. And what concerns me, not only the building being very rotten and very bad condition, the structures that are on the public way. You have a parapet wall in front of that building that's probably on a ten degree, fifteen degree angle, nothing holding it, just a matter of time, that whole front of that building is gonna fall over on that public way. It's tall enough that we would even reach the street. My recommendation is either repair it or tear it down. That's why I like to have the people here to discuss it with them, have the council ask them questions on what their plans are with the building. To repair a building like this and bring it up to a standard, a lot of people are confused that it has to be brought up to today's code. No. When you deal with the property maintenance code book, it is supposed to be brought up to the standards that it was when it was built. So when you talk about buildings here that may have been built in the thirties, forties, you know, that is a long way from today's code. But in the property maintenance code book, it has to meet the standards of the days it was built. So as you see with these pictures, this building comes nowhere close to that. With the parapet walls falling, electrical wires, from outside of the building, definitely an electrical hazard if they would ever turn, try to turn the power on, which would be hard to turn the power on right now because we would be doing inspections, so we would naturally have a serious issue with turning on the power with a building like this. So what I'd like to offer to the council is to hear from y'all. What would y'all like to see done with this building? And in most cases where I work, y'all will give me a recommendation, the city a recommendation on what's the next step with this particular person. Give them thirty days, give them sixty days, give them ninety days to address us on what their plans are with that building. And, and that's where I'm asking y'all for, give or take over the body, the third body letters. Yes, sir. I got a receipt back from them. We sent them a certified letter to show up here tonight.
So they were served.
And they were served. So when they do not show up, well, we gotta get to the next step. And in a lot of cases, that's the next step, is a letter from the city attorney requesting them to come to the next council meeting to address the issue. Because the issues really need to be addressed. Again, it's on Main Street, it's eyesore, it's a safety hazard, it's kind of all of those.
Would, would, I'm sorry. From your, your standpoint, what would be your, and, and I'm not asking this question to influence the council's decision, but rather just for my own sake, what would be possible recommendations you would provide the, the building on?
This particular building is so dilapidated, so rotten down, and I would probably, you're gonna, you're gonna open up a tenant order as you get into that building, it's just gonna multiply. I always use the logic, if it's gonna take me, get the building appraised. That building appraised for next to nothing because of the condition of it. So now, if, let's say it appraises for sixty thousand. Now I gotta spend forty, fifty thousand to fix it, why do it? You know, tear it down, build your nice office building, whatever, whatever, and, and let your money work for you. That way. So my recommendation to these people is tear it down. Now, I've had them come to me, you know, with double virals and say, "Oh, I can fix it." Okay, we're gonna give you ninety days to bring it up to standards when that building was built. Fix that parapet wall, fix the windows, fix all the rocky siding, fix the electrical issues, plumbing issues, because there's plumbing vents that's just falling down, electrical wiring meter bases that's falling off the building, and those. It would cost a fortune to fix it, but I always say that's their option.
So Mr. Richard, what would be, what would be legally, a legal timeframe for us to give them to do it? Is this ninety days?
There's nothing carved in any legal book. Generally, it's up to the council what they want to give them. That's why I like to have them here, in present. Most cases, they give, the council will give them thirty days to commence work. Give us an effort of what you want them to do. And then once they commence work, pull the permits, commence working, well, they're working, you know, so we're gonna give them some slack. Now, if they stop working for six months, we gotta go back out on again.
One of my concerns is that the property, the address that's, you were given, and the address that's posted is three different addresses.
They, 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 if you go look at that building, there is.
You're right.
I think the same person.
That's right. The same person owns all of it.
I have a question.
Mr. Mooney, you said something about the building maintenance book, right? Who, who issues that book? Is that like state law or something?
The International State Code Council issued that book.
My, my concern is this, we've got regulations for everybody that when they go in, they gotta get new permits and bring it up to today's standard, but you just mentioned that you only have to bring it up to the standard of the thirties if it was built in the thirties? It has no regulation that brings it up to today's standard?
Nope. The property maintenance code book says you have to bring it up to the standards it was when it was built.
And, and, and let me give you a reason why.
It's like a double deputy, and I don't like putting double, double deputy. I mean, like, if we or anybody might want to fix their building, we gotta bring it to the highest standard, but yet people don't.
No, you don't. We tell you that.
I'm just saying, when you want to go to court, if you want to move a building into Church Point right now, let's say a trailer, whatever, you want to bring it into Church Point, you have to bring it up to today's codes, correct? If not, it can't come into the city. That's correct, right?
No, sir. No, by, no, by the, the age, by the age of the trailer. What's happening right now with old homes that's moving in here? I think, what, we got a ten year, fifteen year? Ten, ten years. So we have a ten year.
But still, but to his, I, I, I agree, but still, still to his point, that's still within ten years. It's not like thirty years.
Bring it up to the ten years.
Right. It's still not thirty years. Thirty years.
That's right. In other words, we're not gonna take that trailer house and make you change the doors because they don't meet today's code, the windows because they don't meet the code. Now, if that window is broken out, the doors are rotten and falling off. No, that ain't the standards it was built to when it was built. That's my point. It doesn't meet the standards.
But my thing is, like, if I were to buy that building tomorrow, One Twenty-Six, so I only have to bring it up to the maintenance of One Twenty-Six, or then what you impose on me to bring it up to today's standards because I'm a new owner?
Right, right. No. There's only one button. What's that? The button is, if it exceeds fifty percent of the value of that building, your repair work exceeds fifty percent of the value of the building. Now, who determines the value of the building? Do we want it to get appraised? Then you gotta get appraised. You know, if we can't come up with a general agreement, you can't come up here and say that building's worth three hundred thousand.
So if it exceeds fifty percent, then I have to bring it up to today's code.
So if it exceeds fifty percent of the value, and that's a state law, I gotta borrow it. If it exceeds fifty percent of the building, it has to be brought up to today's code, your repair work. So some of these buildings that have gotten so dilapidated, so rotten, falling apart, it's almost impossible to bring them up to the standards and meet the value of the building.
Understood. I just curious, do you have a lot of people fixing their buildings in Church Point now? So you know, you're gonna put one standard on them, and they gotta bring it up and make it all look good, and then you go to some others and be like...
We have two or three in town right now that are repairing buildings that I can almost promise you, they exceed fifty percent of the value of the building. But the general agreement is, fix it like it was. You know, bring it up to a standard that you can be proud of that house, and your neighbor will get off our back. You know, that's kind of what it's all about. Anyhow, this one particular one, if I have to recommend, make a recommendation tonight, is would be to maybe have Brad step in, send him a certified letter that we want to hear from them, on what their plans are to do with that building. If they continually ignoring us, Brad, as a city attorney, goes on to the next step. We can demolish the building. There's some legal process that the city attorney can take in your hands to go in front of a, basically a judge, and say, "We want to tear that building down at the city's expense." The city tears it down and puts a lien on the property. But we don't want to go that far with it. Generally, they'll do something.
We have a lot of buildings.
Yeah, a lot of buildings.
We're, we're taking these six tonight. So if y'all want to take my recommendation, we'll get another certified letter to them. But a letter can't help them if they want to do this building.
And, and Mr. Richard, and, and Mr. Richard, moving forward, are you okay with this being the next, the, kind of like the process? Because we had not actually identified the process regarding if someone doesn't show up for this. So can we say that that would be, that will not be the...
Yes, sir, that is the process.
That is the process?
That is the state law process.
All seven of these tonight are notified and show up.
No, I can see.
So I'm gonna make a note.
No, I see she's here. There's a lady here. That's what I, yeah.
I'm sorry. Oh, you are? No. Let me, let me tell her a process also while she's here. What happened with this particular job, since she showed up, we, we told her, since she started the process of tearing the building down, y'all do not have this one.
Okay.
Because we pulled it off the agenda. Because they are making the effort to tear it down. And when we see that they're making the effort, once we send them a letter, well, you, you're doing due process, so no need to show it up. Okay. Well, by the next council meeting, if it's not tore down, that's okay. By the next council meeting, if it's not tore down, I ask you to come out. And that's kind of the way we work. It's hard to sort, go ahead.
I remember years ago, my house burned in eighty-three, the town supplied a fluke for like, the debris and to get rid of it. Do they still do that? Probably not because the landfill's not...
No, but we do have somebody in town, what kind of number you call? I remember seeing it, and so, yeah, over by State, they had, he used a company, it's a local, and they bring you a, a dumpster or whatever, a roll-on mop.
But we want to thank the lady for going ahead and starting with the city.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
I appreciate it.
We totally appreciate it, man.
To, just to explain the process like we do in the other, some other cities. Yes, sir. There are two things. You still got some electrical hazards on the backside of the building, where you have that roof area that's...
The old receptacle and all.
That just needs to be a GFI receptacle and a cover for it. I see that for the road. That wall, that, without getting inside a building, I, I don't even know how that wall stand up just by looking at, I've bow down. Y'all can look at your pictures. Yeah, but again, it's continuing, becoming an eyesore, deteriorating, and...
You understand, I'm working for property, and I've been staying in for a long, since I'm here. And have risen, the property guys around, and I brought them back. A lot of buildings that connect to it was big, and I worked there, it was trash, a lot of it. Companies are, both of them burned.
Counsel, did y'all...
The handle side, we get a dust on the side. It was large inside.
Have y'all had a chance to look at the pictures?
Yes, sir.
And he's been speaking, maybe on...
I can't hear anything he's saying, I mean...
What he's telling me, just to recap a little bit, he bought the building seven years ago, and he's been gradually, as income allows, assuming, to repair the building. What, what's happening, if you look at your pictures, that is One Twenty-One Main. The, again, to recap the concerns, you've got broken windows, rotten windows, windows bolted up, wall bolted out real bad, that left-hand wall when you're facing it, bad condition. I'm surprised it still stand up. That back roof, did you repair that back roof?
If you look at the rear of the building, that sixty-foot of the building, the roof was repaired up to this part, but it didn't paint and do any work. That's gonna be taken off.
So you take it out?
Taking that off, and I'm adding, probably add, to the end of the problem.
Make sure you do the permit process, so we'll know how close to that back street can come. Because there are setbacks, right, Todd, on that back street?
Yes.
So you, you probably have already been set up with this. Yes. Right now, I am looking at, so y'all follow with me, the... Right now, I am looking at, so y'all follow with me, the AC units that, let me go to the first page here.
How about the ones that you've buildings that are actually being torn down? If there's anything valuable, give it to the people who are working on it.
I got receipts close to forty thousand dollars I spent on the building in the last year. There was a building on the back of the property that was folded that I removed and replaced with a new one. And bare body, nothing, it's steadily and actively working.
I've been inside his building, he's done a lot of work there.
But that's what I'm saying, is that if there's someone that they aren't tearing them down, if there's something valuable, maybe like you just keep like you are working on, you know?
And the wall that is, been breached, is, uh, is in the process right now of being fixed. I mean, not physically right now, but devotion to everything's being.
Got it in gear.
Yeah, we got it in gear, we're trying to get a plan of how we do it.
Counsel, my recommendation is, is to give the guy the chance to renovate it.
Is he?
And, uh, you got electrical issues and all that.
That wasn't even a, yeah, that wasn't a, as heck. Front of the building, you had a, you had a wash.
I don't know if y'all hearing what he's saying.
No.
Speak louder so they can hear you. What he's telling me, a lot of electrical issues, now let, let me tell you what happened. When I went that day, he wasn't there. There was a gentleman that I'm assuming worked for him, was there, and he asked me what were some of my issues? And I told him, well, right now, all this electrical wiring that's on the ground, on the wall, receptacles hanging, that type of stuff, the rotten siding. I just kinda briefly told him my issues, and that we were looking to get that repaired. And that's where.
We're using the report.
Electrical stuff, so he got started on electrical stuff already. He told me also, you can recap this, but he also has in gear to repair that wall that is bowed out so bad. We got rotten windows, rotten wall, a lot of issue structurally there. That's, that is on voucher to fourth page. You see that wall, how it's bowed out real bad? Uh, siding rotten, windows rotting, again.
I don't know if this is, whatever, make any difference to y'all, but I am in the process right now of getting the building studied.
Sure.
To get help, to get funding.
Y'all heard that? That he, he's trying to get some money, but he's having it registered on the social society. To try to get some brand money to help him fix it.
So you are, so you are actively, since Mr. Richard has gone out there, you've been, could you say, I thought I heard you say something about electrical, you're working, you've been, so you're actively working on getting?
Actively working on it since.
Since he, so technically, you shouldn't be your guy?
I should. But I understand is that.
Can we appreciate that?
Structural part, on the north east face of the building.
Yes, sir.
Which is being, is just, you know, wheels are turning a little slow, and then I guess that the, uh, they would like to see.
Appreciate that.
A lot of effort has been made inside. And on parts of the building, I feel really attention. Uh, the part that I live in, I live in the building, the back half of the building, we did the roof of that building, started installing, we, uh, re-renovate the walls and windows.
I wanted to, uh, mention tonight too, by him living in the building, that, that is a big violation of having a residence inside a working building. It was the biggest, um, hazard there, most people don't realize, is that they're most hazardous occupancy, other than an H-type office, it's a red one. You can probably check with your fire department, I bet you have a little fires dealing with residents. Then you do commercial. A building like this doesn't have the proper means of egress when you're sleeping in it. Uh, proper alarm, smoke alarm, fire alarm, like you are here.
It's got a full security system, you can check, and school detectors.
Now, you know, if he, if he's punishing that type of protection, probably the only thing we're missing is the proper windows to get out of it. Because you have to have a, what we call a emergency means of egress, which is a window. So, uh, when you repair these windows.
I got something to prove, just jump out.
But when you repair these windows, fix them so you can get out of them.
Well, I'm trying to say.
And if you want me to, I'm more than happy to walk through, which I'm giving my opinion.
Mr. Richard, Mr. Richard, in, in, in this situation, like, we're dealing with, with Mr. Bork, because first of all, he started, he's already started the process, so, I mean, my hat's off to you for that, that's great. However, it sounds like he, because of the size of his building, uh, I think one of the really important things is that he's looking into whether or not that building is, has some historic value, which would actually add to the value of our community, because that's big for us. Uh, is there a possibility in situations like his, can we extend the amount of time that he's gonna need? Because I think ninety days, whatever, it may not be enough time for you, sir.
I would recommend readdressing it in four months, five months, six months.
Absolutely.
Log his process progress, I'm more than happy with that. It sounds like he won't do right, he just needs the revenue to do it.
Absolutely.
So I would definitely ask the council to work with him.
I bought the building for forty-five, I probably got it.
But work on the outside when we work on the inside. That way we're getting looking good for the city.
As long as it's still, we put it.
Right. So I recommend we make a, a record of six months.
I got a, I got a big issue with this. My dad moved here from Germany twenty-five years ago, and the city kicked him out of a building that he was living in, that just, the old shoe store right there, because there was an ordinance against living in the city, living in a commercial building. My dad got put on the street out of all of it to my house twenty-five years ago. Thirty-five, is that long ago? There was a, there was a, some kind of restriction that he couldn't live with, that restriction, that was gone.
Most of the stuff's already on the town.
That's before my time, too. We're, uh.
That's what happened, because he was at the shoe store, and the old man that used to do the shoes.
Mr. GoPro?
Yeah, Mr. GoPro, he moved in there.
I, I would, uh, Counsel, I would, I would make this suggestion. Yes, if you're not building code book wise, you're definitely not supposed to live in a commercial building, there's a lot of ifs and a lot of buts. Uh, like emergency egress windows in every bedroom, that's a must, smoke alarms, uh, carbon monoxide detectors. It's tough to make this into a residence. I would hope it's for a part-time, like part-time residence.
It's been a dream of mine since the show, Vegas, with Dan Tana had his fever. He drove up to the hospital.
With your motorcycle.
That's what I got, my motorcycle.
I think, I think, me, if he's doing the proper, uh, security, smoke alarm, windows to get out of it, and that's where I would like to come in and seek to it that you have a proper protection.
And he's not using the whole building for his home, he's only using a little, kinda like the old mom and pop stores back in the day. They now a little place reserved for their home.
And I know a lot of country stores, they still.
So can y'all just write, do you recommend right now that he goes towards the permitting process? Because you said he's been doing.
Yep.
Okay, so he's into the permitting process of what he's doing? And another thing is, what was it?
Six months. We'll, we'll revisit this, this site and see what the process is.
Now, no formal letters, no piece in?
No, sir.
No form, no form.
Even over five, right here.
Okay. Now, addressing the organs that was brought up, about the commercial building, you know, go along through with it?
Yes, I will say.
Ladies and comrade.
I'll go through them that tomorrow, the next day.
No, that's worse.
We don't want people living there.
It's not to put you out, we're looking for your safety, man. A lot of taxi stuff.
Be careful.
Painting and everything in there.
Yeah, I came to one of my suppers and got drunk before I even knew.
All right. I think we get.
Compliance, compliance for residents.
Yes, sir. We'll do what it takes to become in compliance.
I need to bring some tequila.
In most cases, strip third and a catch. I'm gonna stop by there tomorrow, but thank you. All right, uh, six months for him, who will come back and visit, and I'll go visit him. What's the date? Wednesdays. Our next one is on.
Thank you, Mr. Bork.
Is, uh, Mr. Guidry here?
He's actually missed.
This building is, I guess, an old mechanic shop. I passed by there today. Really? Because he has enough vehicles around there, junk vehicles to, say, right here. And that's where he parks. Send him a letter, just like we did the.
Letter, yes?
Yes, sir.
And that is a, they have to respond.
They, they have to respond to us, and then we have the next council. The next one is, uh, three seventeen eight. You will see on your pictures, a trailer house that is beyond repair. This, this particular one, I mean, the floor is rotten, the roof is rotten, no doors, no windows in it, it's just there. Needs to be hauled off. That's Mr. Havitt, he's from Browley.
Nobody would.
There's one burden. The second building on the property is a mobile home that's completely burned. Both two of them, nothing left to them. Uh, my recommendation is both of them need to be cleaned and demolished. Now, if I would send Mr. Havitt, I would get Brad working on this ASAP, because these two buildings can, can be rushed through the system, I call it, very fast. I didn't rely. I don't know why you'd follow him, knowing him, knowing him also.
That would be the piece of that you added, you went to pick it up.
There are two or three contractors that I know. Go ahead, Todd.
Oh, and I apologize, go back on the road, that was a building also abused.
Yes, sir.
So there are, is it for both?
For both, all those, uh, old trucks, it's, it looks like they're just abandoned, don't work, whatever. On these mobile homes, you have a couple of contractors around that village, and they even goes to homes at around a dollar seventy-five a square foot to haul them to the dump. So, and at any point, the council needs to budget, to budget to have these, uh, mobile homes hauled off. Always they budget above seventy-five.
The council got that at like seventy-five, so all of them is enough.
Todd did mention something, Todd, the question is, do we have the money to, do we have the money to tear these down? If it comes to that.
Um, you know, the way to do that process of, we have to put a little bit on the farm, we have to come out for.
Well, we do have some funds to allocate to tear on that. And, I guess, I think. Roughly a dollar seventy-five a square foot would carry anything. Since we don't save them.
Do you give somebody, like, what their place burned down, or what they have, do you give them a picture or is there, is there a comment for the ones that actually burned?
That's why I like them here, because of that, because they work with their insurance.
Been years, it's been over about recently.
Like these two trailers, and y'all tell me how long they've been. That's why I would give them thirty days, it goes where the city takes it.
Whether we pull it far.
My recommendation, give them thirty days, or the city will.
Hard part, the kids film, as sometimes I've heard of, they're called control fives.
Well, these are, these not even good for control fives. No, they, they would not do that in a residence.
Oh, okay.
But this is, uh, within a residence. So my recommendation is, uh, and with Brad cinema, I notice of him, in thirty days we get rid of them, or we'll go to the next stage. Uh, next is three forty-six Barus. Uh, this house, again, it can be repaired, but it's gonna cost a lot to repair. I did notice that she has a forced sale sign in the front yard now. So she's probably trying to get rid of, unload the house, because she knows we're coming after her to do something with it. Is Miss Barus here? Uh, no, I'm sorry. Wilson. I've seen them. The owner is Wilson, yeah, John Wilson. She's probably white. Uh, we might have to reset all their notices and come to the next council. I think that if that date was mixed up on all these letters, that might be why they not here.
So she sold?
She did.
That was the one, she said she wouldn't sell it.
Okay, so did she sell us her intent, other than selling it?
She was trying to sell it and do some repairs on it.
Because it's, because again, if you look at your pictures, it's practically beyond repair. There's some serious rotting, caving in on the right hand side. Windows all busted out, black seals, black wood joints. It's, it's, it's. Fairly bad, it's, it's, there's. Best thing to do is put some out of the pie, and then we're down to build a nice home for that. Same letter? Same. Yes, sir. My other one is on X, six sixteen X. Again, another burnt, uh, trailer, burnt mobile home. Oh, the owners here, that's C and B Investments LLC, what's on the title. Seven and dollars, I get, again, I would shoot them a letter, thirty days, you gotta go. It's completely burnt down, there's nothing left of it.
We can decide on this property.
Which one?
That's basically for all the, and the thirty days.
Okay, six sixteen X, same thing, it's a mobile home, completely destroyed. I'd give them thirty days to get rid of it. I, I noticed there's a camper located right on the side of this property, the pipe.
Is this, Mr. Richard, is this right, is this right past Church Point Middle?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, right down the street to the right.
The little.
Yes, sir. Thirty days. And that's it? Any, any questions? We tried to do this process.
That went street to street to streets, look at these old, uh, condos.
These came in as complaints from neighbors, that they're tired of seeing the.
Because that old house on Minix Alley also, and then.
Minix?
Minix, yeah, that house been there.
Oh, hi. Yeah, off of Minix Alley, that's the old, the old house.
That's addressed for.
Finance.
Next me.
A few?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was finance board, the last time I checked the tax, uh, the court records.
Right, it's, 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 it's on next month's agenda.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't belong here, he just put it over there. Yeah, he was freaking out.
I think the mayor's got a few more for us for the next month's agenda. This was kinda like a, I don't even wanna call it a trial balloon, but at least give y'all an idea of how this works everywhere I work. And Cooley, we had to say that, and upon the council's approval, are y'all satisfied with doing, how to do ten a month?
Absolutely.
Ten a month? Per council?
That's cause we can't go more than that.
Right, well, well, I was, actually, I was gonna suggest, if, two, two things I'm wondering, are we, every month, are we getting, say, for example, if we do ten, are we going to present at least two from each district, so that all the districts are equally served? And I'm just throwing this out there, and the second suggestion or question would be, if we're going to be addressing ten a month, just addressing, took about fifteen, twenty minutes.
Multi longer.
Yeah, at least. So I'm asking, is, if there's a more uniform way that we can do your important part, the council?
Y'all luck is fifteen minutes, cause they would've had some of the owners here.
It would've. Very easy for me to go through this pack with the visuals of the pictures, and write, and identify, and understand definitely what you're saying.
Right.
So I think if we do our homework when we get this packet, that shouldn't take long.
So what's gonna happen is next month, all those people are coming in, plus we're gonna have to do another.
Exactly. Just that, because it can't, it could get pretty limited, and, and I just, I just, I'm concerned that it would be sort of at the expense of the general public that wants to be here, maybe to hear other issues, and they're having to hang around while we deal with this, that's, that's my concern.
Put it at the end of the meeting.
Maybe at the end, or.
Put it at the end of the meeting. Sure, we can put it at the end of the meeting. This is our first round, this is our first round, I had, so, I think it's, uh, educational for y'all to see, and look, I do this for Bruce Sarg, Karen Scott.
It's awesome, and the report is awesome, cause I, I was definitely.
No problem, any more questions?
Thanks, Cooley.
Okay. Next item. Liquor license request by Kaden Foods Express LLC located at four sixty-four Flatland Street. This is for Miss Condis, old Miss Condis store. Some of you familiar with that? It's a liquor license, it's, uh.
Is it still a store?
Well, you can open it up.
Oh, cause I thought it was.
And I'm understanding everything isn't compliant, but it's two, it's a liquor license, correct?
Yes, per that's all we give, may I speak to Mr. Shor?
So we just need to make a motion to?
Right.
Is he here over here? You making a motion?
Yes. Well, I remember.
But, no.
Well, it's my sister, but she's not here.
You're the sister, uh, you're the brother of the, your sister is the owner?
Yeah.
Correct.
They were here last month, and they weren't put on the agenda somehow, and they had to come back.
Al, do you have any objections?
No, sir.
Do I have a motion? This is George.
And I'll second the motion, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion, comments?
You have a meeting?
Any discussion or comments? All in favor of signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Okay, letter C, under legal, reports, uh, liquor license exemption request by Churchport County Department for June third, annual car and truck show at City Park Pavilion. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, any questions, discussion? Any comments, discussion, or question? All in favor of signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay. Letter D, request for speed bumps on East Briscoe Street.
Uh, yeah, we, please, mayor, uh, this is, uh, again, my third request, that we move forward with, uh, setting up or erecting, uh, speed bumps on East Briscoe Street. Uh, I'd like to also state for the record that we initially, when I initially presented it to the council, it was decided that we would forego, uh, putting speed bumps, uh, in lieu of having law enforcement out there and assessing the traffic. I appreciate the chief having his, uh, men out there and assessing the traffic. Unfortunately, that did not, in the, in the, the results was not what the community, uh, appreciated. Uh, there still continues to be speed problems down that street. As I mentioned before, uh, there's a considerable number of young kids and seniors that are on that street. I have actually witnessed cars just zooming through there. So at this time, I'm actually submitting for the record a petition, uh, of, signed by the, the residents of the community, and I'd like for this to go on record. And once again, a request that speed bumps are actually installed on East Briscoe Street, and I can provide, uh, mayor, provide you with a specific location of the speed bump, uh, in fact, I provide it to you.
I use one question, that there is also a public housing that.
There is, correct, thank you.
It's on the way to.
Thank, absolutely, thank you for, uh, for assisting me with that.
Then you get to the light, you take a left when you're going towards the school.
Yeah, well, actually, you go, you take a right person.
Go to the left, they have speed bumps, but they're not painted.
Okay.
So you can't see them.
Well, you can't see them, and that's a good idea, that's something that needs to be, absolutely, and that's something that, that probably needs to be.
Speed bumps there, but they're not painted, you can't see them.
Yeah.
They probably were at one time. Well, that one time, it's just a.
And that, and that's, and that's a good point, and it needs, right, and it needs to be, it needs to be painted. And, and it, it, it actually is still in effect, but I think that was one of the concerns, that speed bumps tend to need repairs, et cetera. And that particular speed bump has been there for years without requiring any kind of maintenance, other than, and thank you for bringing that, bringing that up, other than needing some paint right now.
She started walking on that side too, man.
Good job. So, uh, we should inform with that.
So you're asking for what?
Asking for, well.
You do have a specific.
Yeah, I said I'll provide it to you.
And it, and it wouldn't, wouldn't be any, about where you.
It is actually, what, what, what I'm looking at is, it is actually sort of like in the middle of where the housing, particularly the housing area. Yeah, so, so if someone turned down that street and began speeding.
Before you start getting up or slowing down.
It would slow them down, and then, by the time they go over the hump, and they decide to start speeding up again, they would actually be beyond where the seniors and the, and the kids reside. So that would be, that would be safe. No further. Out there, we already, we already made a motion years, last year, about the speed bumps.
Although we can, we can take that.
We have, we have an artist in place, I guess?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Actually.
You have a motion?
Yeah, I'll take that.
Second. I'll second. Well, no, 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 correction, I, I will send, I, I'll request that someone else second this, since I don't want to introduce a guy. Uh, no, I just wanted, I'd like to share the, share the love.
Any more further discussion, question? Discussion or question? All in favor of signature by by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item is the closing comments. Looks like I'm first listening. Uh, we had a fresh peeking on the porch, which was deemed a success Saturday. Uh, I would get between thirty-five and forty people in today. The, uh, that's, okay. Uh, would start on Saturday with a success, when Sunday was kinda slow from what I was told, it's the rain, okay? Uh, I'd like to thank the street department for, uh, going out Sunday and taking care of fallen trees, uh, doing, uh, unstoppable culverts with, with leaves and et cetera. They did a wonderful job in putting up barricades and trying to keep people away from the area and so forth.
Pulling ranches up the street.
Uh, I would also like to publicly, uh, make energy coming out, and, uh, we have a telephone goes down by the hospital, and they were out here quickly. Uh, also, they called home, we had a tree that was, uh, partially down, partially was over the roadway, and, uh, we couldn't cut because we cut this limb, it fell down top of power, so, kinda stayed away. Uh, as far as FEMA is concerned, uh, we received, uh, two checks in the mail from FEMA. Uh, one was basically a little over four thousand dollars for repairs on, uh, the sewer street, which is next to the South Trail. And we also had one for sixteen, oh, yeah, yeah, about sixteen thousand dollars, uh, to, uh, pay for overtime pay.
In the office.
That was in office, okay? And we're in the process of looking at other monitors coming in.
So what happens on this one?
Repair, sewer plant.
Sewer plant.
Okay, question, on all, now with all the winds and storms that happened, and all these, you know, designs leading, how about all the poles that are now, meaning who's responsible for going back to the.
Energy.
I thought I had that we get today really close.
Uh, if some of you had heard, the high school was hit pretty bad, baseball field, it started dug out, and of course, uh, it was, looked like a little twist or something came through, and you could almost see the path of it.
Was that, like, to the, to the ground?
Yes, the, 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 the little building behind the, uh, those are recycling booths.
Ticket.
Was, the ticket booth was overturned completely. And of course, the, uh, filming press box, a few of the panels were moved from that building. And that was a few other little damages. Uh, we met, might be Red Cross, with Red Cross, and they're supposed to be coming in in June to, uh, actually go around and, and get people signed up. This will be in the paper, uh, coming up pretty soon, where you can get, uh, free, uh, firewalls, installation into your home. So, if you're interested, watch the paper, uh, they'll give you all the information, okay? This is through Red Cross, of course, uh, heart, okay? People on the council, plans for LMA convention, July twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. Uh, we're gonna get, get with you to find out. And I believe that's about it, I wanna thank everyone who's coming out, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to case.
Thank you.
Is that right? Mr. Come on. Mr. Cooley?
Thanks for community development, for, for the work they do, but I'm also concerned about the children, the children, the next house, you know, I've got it three, four times already, uh, and, but I'd like to, but I, I want to thank the chief, I know, they've been, they've been trying to work on, on, on my job, and I'd also like to, I'd also like to come up with a, with some thoughts of a plan, we should, we should have some thoughts of neighborhood watch with a, with a phone number, so we could get in contact with the police department or whatever, I know we have nine, one, one, but, uh, I'd, I'd like to have some help and play. It's been going around, it's been rolling off, and you know, I'd like, I'd like to try to, you know, work together, try to put an end to it, it's, it's getting out of hand. It's getting out of hand, and, uh. Also, we, also, we, Chief, uh, Chief Mr., uh, Mr. Dale's fallen lawn, he's, he's trashed, and he can get back there at the corner. And also Chief, uh, Gary's son, he was in, he was in a hospital too, and glad he came out all right, so, uh, everything, everything looking, hope it's all right for Adam. Thank y'all a lot for coming, appreciate it.
Mr. Goodwin?
Uh, that's why I want to apologize for my tar. Uh, just got back from Houston, I didn't get a chance to go and spruce up or anything, but that's what we've been dealing with, my son's mom, everything's good. Thanks for coming.
Thought you were fishing, and you can't be fishing out there.
Ms. Joy?
Same thing, thank you all for coming, um, it's late, end of this month, our kids are gonna be on the street, we gotta be out of school. So, um, watch, watch out for them, you know, they don't think, they're young, a lot quicker.
When they come walk on the sidewalk, they walk in the street.
Right, they walk all over there, they, they only gonna learn, just wanted to get them a ladder, but they're some young children, trying to become adults, and we're adults, so we're gonna take on the, on a bill to looking out for my little people, please. Um, thank you all for coming, I just want to ask Todd if I don't possibly get the group to tell them, uh, and when we, uh, could get to that, Mr. Cooley's presentation again, fantastic, I absolutely was very impressed with that, that you could see everything. Thank you to the street department.
Julian, he works for me.
Very, very welcome. Thank you.
Well, Jean, before she goes to you, I do want to thank the police department. Uh, they, uh, did call me to deliver my package, but we were out of town, I told them to bring it back here. Sorry.
No problem. Yeah, uh, again, I, Mr. Richard, yeah, great report, really in-depth, it helps us make the decisions that we have to. Uh, I'm thankful that everyone came out tonight. Uh, I especially want to thank Mr., again, Mr. Scott LaFlore for his presentation. We really appreciate concerned citizens helping us to be aware of all those things. Uh, my last thing is, uh, just a quick announcement, that, uh, the Third Annual Summer Basketball League, uh, councilwoman just mentioned about school is about to be out. Kids are looking for things to do. Again, this is the Third Annual Summer Basketball League, applications are now being picked up, all right? And we're excited that this year, we're actually going to be including schools like, uh, Mother of Peace, uh, Rain, Ranch, and Mir. So if you have kids between the ages of seven and seventeen, and is interested in playing in the Summer Basketball League, feel free to pick up an application at either Churchport Primary Care, or you can call Churchport Primary Care, or you can even call me, three three seven seven eight four zero three six six. Have a good night.
All right. I want to, I want to thank Dale too for all the, all the work he's been doing with the, with the Warren Department, I know I admit it, but it's his work, you can't leave him out, you know, he does, he does a, he does a good job, and he's real fortunate to have, thank you, Dale.
Okay, public comments, staff?
Yes, well, even at the end of such a long meeting, lots of things are getting done, meetings tend to be long, I, I too want to thank the mayor and his crew for installing our new signs on the property at Leview Presidential, I hope you've noticed that.
They look awesome on this.
They don't they, they were designed by, actually, Mr. Glenn Foll, it was his idea to put signs, and then, one of our board members, Malcolm Sellers, was responsible for the design. And they did a good job. And also, uh, the mayor and his crew, uh, installed or moved an antique piano into the Presidential, uh, donated by Miss, I don't know, so you'll have to come by, and this is a piano you can play without breaking, right? You know, so it's historic, but it's not, it's in good condition. And I want to thank the, uh, the police chief for the patrols of the Presidential and its rounds. I wish the young officer and the crew captain were still here, because I was making my rounds after dark one night, and he stopped me. And so that's a good thing, because if I'm looking out, and then, a couple nights later, I bumped into him again, and the new recruit from last month, uh, was his partner, and they were, uh, keeping an eye on the depot. The incidence of the falling globes of the depot are almost nonexistent now. And, uh, also, another thing, uh, as, obviously, I'm in, I'm interested in historical preservation, I hope everybody's noticed, yet another business downtown has put that single, the Stripton Way, I believe, put that single strand of white lights that are, uh, there's at least four businesses now downtown that are lighting up at night, which is really cool. And I'm so gratified of all, all the other things, I heard Mr. Lally, uh, trying to preserve an historic building, that's a wonderful thing. Mr. Scott, with your presentation with, uh, such an easy solution, right? Straighten up the sides and tear the other ones down, right? And, but it makes such a big impact, and I, I thank you for that, and, uh, of course, our inspector here. If we can't save them, let's get rid of the building, right? So, thanks so much, there's a lot going on.
Thank you, Mr. Ponte, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn this meeting immediately.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries, meeting adjourned.